What will call? Director Penny?
I'm here.
Director Pearson?
Here.
Director Sarno?
Here.
Director Reed is here. Director Story called and said she was unable to attend, so that will be a... Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, do we have any additions or additions to the agenda?
Nothing staff.
We have any conflicts of interest with tonight's agenda?
I do not.
First one? Public comments? Yes, so presentations, we have... Concerned with younger regular board meeting for April 13th and special board meeting minutes for April 20th.
One correction to make on the second page of the reverse feedback piece. We can put down authorized staff work for working firm necessary to separate auditing. Auditing firm from to account for all approved expenditures, we also need to add in unapproved expenditures.
Okay.
Because we did discuss that, so I think that needs to be...
Prove the present agenda.
A second. You need to include with additions. Thank you.
Mr. Pearson and Sarno?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, Chief Support. So we got a couple items to keep short and sweet because we've got some other things to tie on that are going to come up. So JBG is here with us and we continue to kind of work on refining the 22 amended budget. We've got it into the packet, we've got a couple items for discussion and we'll talk about a little later on that. So this will be the first stab at that and then we'll look at on it a little later as we go down. May third, I had the opportunity to do a presentation in the morning to the Wellington Chamber of Commerce for the network breakfast. So it turned out that was a good opportunity to hit on, get on a few items. So took the opportunity to give a little update on the fire department. Talked a little bit about how our fire prevention society codes, code enforcement, code review that works for that. And then we were able to give a, give a little bit of a kind of a heads up and a little talking physicalist wildfire prevention week. And have some information there related to some of wildfire prevention, emergency alert patient signups. And then plug our, plug our election that day and then plug the open house that we did on Saturday, the 7th over at the Waverly Station. So that kind of jumps into the next thing on that Saturday, the 7th, we did a wildfire preparedness open house at Station 17 now at the Waverly Station. We have Lerner County Office of Emergency Management show up with us, set a table there. The leader 911 folks were there as well doing no code alerts and emergency patient signups. We have Lerner County Sheriff's Office Emergency Services, one of their, one of their specialists, one of the SAM units was out there as well. Kind of static display and then we'll kind of talk through that. And then, of course, our Wellington staff. So I have to thank the, the B shift crew, the ones at 17 over there, I mean, some of them over here, they did a really good job of cleaning up the station and getting it spiffed out. Getting all the rigs pulled out, washing floors, doing that kind of stuff. And I think C shift worked on it even a little, little bit more the day before, but we had our A shift crew in the morning. So we were able to get some tables moved from here over there and got some stuff set up, a little less folding tables and things that kind of happened fast. But I think from a, from a display perspective, worked really good. They're a really good turnout. It was 10 to noon and about 10 to 10, people started showing up, I think, really for that, about 15 minutes. We had, it was packed in there, so it was a really, really good turnout for that. So kind of tailed off after that, I think, two hours and especially that earlier part of it. It's a nice window to, to be able to get that information out and do that and not have kind of a long, a long day of that. So appreciate the staff that helped out with that. I think we had a discussion there about even maybe looking at another opportunity before the season's over to get up to maybe the Buckeye Community Center and just do, do another presentation of that way, just maybe a real focus time, a scheduled time to do that and see if folks can do that. The big takeaway that we got, we've had enough lock ins and post-martial incident was emergency notification. And it's, it's not real clear and clean to understand how people are. There's, there's actually multiple ways that you can get notified. And so they, they gave some good information for us, they left us with some handout cards and educated us on helping folks to get people to come in and there's kind of a struggle with how to do it, we can get it done for them. It's just, there's a couple steps, either a cell phone way or through a text, but there's also an online way to do that to make sure you get notified in both ways. So I'm thinking of a big, of course, going forward to continue to push on that through education help our, our staff. And then we'll pass that down to, down to the rest of our staffs to do that. That was a nice piece that came out of that. Really good turnout from there. Kind of the last piece, the, it was kind of during that time that Heaney and company was out here working on with the physical onsite stuff with JBG folks. They're continuing to work on the audit piece, I think it's next week or the following week, is there kind of their scheduled time to finish the work that they were doing on that. And we anticipate them bringing at the June meeting, the draft audit, annual financial audit for review for the board. And then July 31st is the final deadline. So that would give us June meeting to be able to look at it, discuss it, ask any questions about it, and then come back in the July meeting for the approval so that it can be filed before July 31st. So basically, I think everything's on track from that. So thanks to the, to the JBG folks for helping plug in the things that we need to do there. And then we were able to, I think, I think we're pretty close on getting all of their, all of filling all the needs on all the costs that they have. So they've got a lot done on that date, two days that they were there. Other than that, I think that's all I have from the, from the Chief Support, and that a few things we'll hit on is the department.
Then District Board Business, the monthly financial report.
Thank you, Paul Chair. What do I see everybody? You have the April financial report in your packets. Just a couple of items that I want to plan on. Ever you will see from the month of April and year to date, we're behind what we budgeted. That's down to a couple of things. One is timing on the tax revenue. When we move forward and amend the budget, what we do when we build the budget into QuickBooks, we look at when we've seen the revenue from a tax perspective, the percentage of that total revenue each month and we build that into QuickBooks. We're not always right on because that percentage changes, but it's better than dividing it by 12 because we know that's not real. The way that it's been built in here is off. I don't think it was divided by 12, but it's not accurate. I don't think we're that far behind on tax revenue, but we are trending compared to budget behind. The other item is in the service fees. We are behind budget in the service fees piece. And we're asked the Chief to talk about that a little bit, but when we do amend, if we do amend the budget, our goal would be to build our projected service fees into the month that we're projecting the beginning of the season. So Chief, if you want to talk about that.
Yeah, there's, there's two pieces really I think that are important when we talk about the service fees. One, the understanding of it, that's really 100% related to our plan reviews and our permit fees and those type of things. So, so they're not really predictable in general from a, from a cyclical time pattern to say, hey, on these typical months we get those. They're very much project driven. So from a historical perspective and to look back, we're also skewed, especially by last year with the big project related to the school. And then some of the other projects that have come through and timing piece on that. So one, we're trying to really kind of figure out what a conservative amount would be to budget in for service fees. And then two would be, how do, how do we show that in the budget as revenue and looking at when do we expect to receive those? So I think for this year, based off what we budgeted, we'd anticipated that we would have some service fees coming in from the wastewater treatment and the water treatment plant. And we know we'll be getting those, we understand that they're, we're really comparative to the new buildings that are being built on there. As compared to the entire totality of the project as a whole. So I think when we look at that part of it, as we're getting real close to those, for those things to start to be built out, we'll see a spike that comes up with that. Other than that, like our special events and those type of things, those are $75 here, $100 there. That's, that really doesn't drive so much of that, but, but that can have that little bit of ebb and flow.
And so that kind of to the Chief's point, the smaller ones that we can look at historically, judge, that's easier to kind of break that down. We average that over the 12. We'll be close. It's when you have some of these special projects, these bigger projects that are bringing in more fees, the timing on that was going to throw you off. Trying to judge when that's going to happen. So we'll try our best, we'll get close, hopefully we're right on, but...
And I think what we, what we've talked about too is just knowing where everything is. It's, we're better to be conservative and estimate low if we can try to figure out taking, taking the anomalies out of it, the big projects that we've had and just try to be on that lower end, because if we do get those one offs, then it's really looking at how do we want to use that one-time money for one-time expenses. Caught up on, caught up on our, our debt service, purchase of equipment that we otherwise knew we needed but hadn't been able to budget for some of those things. But it's, it's truly one-time money that will come just off of that one project that we need to spend it on one-time things that we had in the wings, but we, we just having fun with that here.
We're flowing a bit into budget here, but to the Chief's point, we don't want to balance our operational budget on revenue that we don't know if we're ever seeing. Obviously, it's a pretty safe bet we're going to see tax revenue relatively. But service fee, while that, those type of things are very conservative on those revenues, because if we overachieve, then we have more money. We don't want to be the other way around, we want to achieve less money. So, so the revenue, I guess, is in great beauty as a date of the month, but the expenses, both the month of April and year to date are under budget. So that's nice to see that at least we're under budget on expenses, under budget on revenue. So yeah, happily answer any questions that you have. I think as we move forward, we want to kind of consolidate some of these reports down to, by the profit and loss that I think you may all be looking at. We'd like to kind of get that down to one page rather than three, so that we can see some better patterns of the board. Obviously, there's more detail behind it, but we would like to do that as we're moving forward. And if you have any questions or any reports you'd like to share.
And so this is going to be somewhat corrected just because the second big tax payment will be people paying the second half time to report that.
Yeah.
Correct. Which will lift like in June, so. I mean, that's a protection.
Yeah, so we, so I can't remember the exact number. We, with the budget that we were doing, we were looking at some of the historical collections of tax revenue. You've got the current budget at 2.1, you've received 1.3, I think when we look for the historical expenses. Yeah, so you also the living behind what you've seen historically, but not 800,000 or something.
Right.
And it's, and it's interesting to say the 10th of the month, those things kind of...
Yeah.
When I look at last year, what we got in February, this year was a little different.
And it's always going to be a difference.
Was higher and a little slower.
We could make a dramatic step.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. And if you go to the last page, you'll actually see the fluctuations of the cash flow of when we're expecting to see tax revenue. So for five districts, I think that's a really important report to look at.
It's a...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, okay, I know, pretending how I stapled it.
Last page of mine.
Yeah.
But this really shows you kind of the challenge in the five district space. Businesses typically see a pretty even cash flow, five districts don't. So this really shows, if you see where it says tax revenue, you'll see the fluctuations on what you have received and then what's projected to be received. I like to report when we did it, so I guess we would provide it. I think, I think it's important to report about that.
Yeah. I like that too, and I think as we historically see that, you know, going year over year, you'll see how that, oh, the two camel humps, but you see the big two camel humps that come in when we get the bulk of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the goal ultimately is to be able to ride out the lows of tax revenue without going on the line of credit, right? I mean, that's why this is really important to see, that ultimately you want to be able to stay off the line of credit. You have enough savings to get you through the month where you don't see tax revenue because expenses stay pretty much the same every month.
Is there one particular area? I know when you said we're under budget, is that kind of over the board or is there a certain area?
Expenses?
Yeah.
Well, in administration, there's some administration wages that were budgeted that were not encoded like that. That's the majority of it.
Okay, change.
Yeah. I'd like to tell you fuel, but no. But yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I waited was.
Yes. We're on our personnel side then.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to present.
If you want to do a...
Approve the... Yeah. Your pipe.
I am. Yeah. I know. And I think that was important, just personally.
Oh, no, I, I think at this point, that's, that's a good thing to do. So do I have a motion to approve the monthly financial report? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, so presentation on the amended draft budget?
Yes.
So on 17 of your packet, you'll see a kind of one-page line item related to our first, our first draft app presenting the board our amended budget for 2022. And what we've, what we've kind of broken out really on this piece of it is to look at the key items that we see where we're going to have in the broader categories that we're going to make adjustments on that based off of the, what we approved in December of 2021 and what we're looking forward. Of note, when we look at these numbers, for the personnel costs, JBG took the actuals from January through basically the end of April, a few days before the end of the month, and we don't, we think we cut all the payrolls that happened in that month. So I think we're pretty close on that from actuals. And then it'll be June through December based off of the, the changes that we have in place and projected through off of the presentations that we presented for. The non-personal costs, those are Jan, basically January actuals, I mean, any of February or all January?
January, too much.
January, too much on, on the, on the, on the actuals, on the non-personal. And then it'll be April through December going forward with any of the other changes we made for that. And so from a, there's a couple of items as we sat down today to go over them. And this is again like a, like a standard budget presentation to the board. This is the first, the first presentation from a draft budget to look at from there. So we'll take feedback from that. We've dove in a little bit deeper into the actuals and now looking at even just kind of getting bills that came in. It's a bad joke, but fuel, right, so the last, it was all staying pretty good. Our, we, we get our fuel bills through Lerner County, so we, we'll get one bill and then we won't get them for two months and we're lined them and then we'll get three bills. So we got our last two of them together and we noticed from about $1,100 is what we've been doing typically a month to about $1,800 on one and $1900 on the other. So we saw a jump of, you know, about $600, $700 on that. So we're, we had budgeted, we had budgeted about 19,000. Then when we looked at actuals, as we looked at actuals over the last couple of years, we were down under reach. So in this, in this one for some of those costs, initially, we bumped it down a little bit, but after meeting day, we're going to, we're going to bump some of those numbers back up because even the talk, they're talking about 60% kind of from last year to this year of a, of a conservative number to estimate in an increase in price, so.
So let's see if I remember the challenge it takes to pull a state level tax.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. That was one of the things by doing it, once we moved to them, we didn't have to go back and ask for the, ask the tax back. So, so that's a nice, it's really good. It's the only time we don't get is if we use some, somewhere else and we, yeah, so we don't, so we don't have to ask for it those back. The, so from a process piece, we'll, we'll put a notification in the, in the newspaper like we would that there's going to be another formal budget hearing at our June meeting. And then we would present the amended budget during that meeting for approval or a budget hearing and for approval from, for, from forward, just kind of where we're at from there. So there were, so as we look at it, kind of a couple of things from there. So you, you'll see as we look at kind of a reflection of the lower cost on the personnel costs. There's some other items related to some, some actual costs that we're experiencing this year related to fleet facilities. So fleet costs, we had a repair on that and that truck that's, that came in this fiscal year that we kind of budgeted across and a few other repairs that come in for that piece. So some of those things that are actuals for now. And so they're, they're best really to look at historical trends plus actuals that are going up this year and some of the things that we anticipate for this year from that side of it. And then recognizing the, we tied out, we'll, we'll see if it kind of into this piece of this recognition, how we're going to move through from the debt service piece that we intend to pay off this year and then... Anything else? Can I capture that?
I think, Chief, I think what you were saying is just looking at historical, that what we've actually spent historically, well, that what we've budgeted historically. I think that was a really important piece, I think you kind of hit on it, I'll kind of re-ask you that. Just some of the variances you're seeing here compared to the adopted, proposed, is just looking at what we've actually spent.
Yeah. So, and I, and I'll just say to, to their time, especially Dom's time, we, we spent quite a bit of time where we go back through historically, through all the information we have in QuickBooks. We pulled up some anomalies and like, let's go find the bills on those things, let's look at where those are. Is that more of a trend or is that more of a one-time thing from there? But tried to look at that and tried to kind of, kind of smooth them over a few years, but try to make sure that there's not, not anything that we're saying. You know, let's just knock it down because we haven't spent on that piece. There's, there's an item where we had just capital stuff, right? We just did a server repair without, so we're going to incorporate that piece into it. Historically, we hadn't spent out of that, out of that budget item, but we had, we knew it was coming up. And so we got to plug it back into that ground. So yeah, so the plan will be, we will, we'll do the posting. Any other feedback from the board as we go, go forward on this? Please share it with us, we'll, we'll look at some of those things. And then we will have, we'll have, I think based off of this, we'll probably have another draft that we'll, we'll just send out to, that you guys get to see it for that piece and make sure there's nothing else on that. And then we'll have it in the June, we posted in there for the newspaper for a, for a budget hearing of that. We'll go through the normal budgeting process and about that. I anticipate that, depending on what are the things from the audit, that we're maybe going to have to do one more of those for the 2021. It seems like the last couple of years we've had to do that. So I don't know if that's, that tends, tends to be more normal or not, but I could, I could foresee potentially doing something like that after the whole audit is complete. We might have to do it amended 2024. Trying to lead the crystal ball. Yeah, thanks. Questions on that? And so like I said, if you, I just spent time looking over that, please, please feel free to send any, any other questions our way. And if you have any other comments on that, we'll make sure we incorporate them.
Okay. District Board Election Report.
Okay, so as a follow-up on that, I just wanted to kind of close the loop on where we are on that. So congratulations to a couple of our newly, newly elected directors in the House. We're going to, a couple of steps that we have in, in front of us here is tomorrow morning, we'll be completing the campus with the designated election official. So the campus board is represented from the election official's office, one of our directors that was not running as a director. So Sarno is going to sit on that and then an elector from the area. So Captain Bennett's going to jump in on that for us, we're going to do a zoom just to go over that campus portion of that. The election judge representative will present their judge's report. And as long as there's no anomalies or any questions from the campus board, that'll be the last piece and we'll certify, the election will be certified after that. The next step is within the 30 days, we're going to complete the oath of office for all of our elected officials. And then that oath will then be submitted with the copy of the surety bond and the judge's, and the judge's campus report. And we'll find that through. So I've been in contact with Ron Trivit from our insurance company, so I'll get the declaration page for the updated surety bond piece. And then with John Camille's office to get the, the blank forms for the oath, oath declaration. So the, and we'll, we'll make arrangements to get that done in between the timeframes so that we can get that done if you have. And then those metals will be done and then, so for, so for the June meeting, that's when we can seat the, seat the new board members during the June meeting. So the oath and such will have to be done before that from a formal piece, what we can do, and do our, do our formal swearing in and seating. So that should be anticipated probably in the next, the next week or so, we'll have the oath forms to be able to do that, just following up. Depends on what the results of the campus, on whether there's actions happening.
Okay. Next item is pension board members discussion. Since Jason was elected to the pension board in December and now will become a pension board member of the district board, we are short, we will be short one pension board member.
So...
I, I think we can appoint somebody.
That's what it turns out. Yep. So appoint somebody to, to go and see if they'll, and then fill out that term until the next month. So five board members plus two volunteer, non-board members that are...
Yeah, so... You know, I, I guess, seeing how there were three people running for election to the pension board in December, the person who was not elected could be asked if they're interested or, you know, I, it's, it's up to the district board to...
Well, I think we are.
Would you be interested? I would be interested if, particularly if Craig is not.
Well, I, I think we should just offer those and have those that are interested offer a submit a letter of interest by a certain date and then we'll consider that as a support.
Work at, I mean, maybe during, how it's settled beforehand so that in the June meeting, we can take it additionally before we're mentioned. Typically, we do the pension board before, we, we want to do that. Or the process maybe during. For that, do the, yeah, so we can do that. With all looking at that from that side of it, we can talk about getting notification out to those, give a date to accept those, see those by, and then we can look at planning the board meetings and, and...
So the next step is the district bylaws.
District bylaws. So the district, the review, I'm sorry, the reverse revised version is in the packet for your consideration for approval. There was a couple of edits that were out of the last, the June meeting that have been, that have been made incorporated into, into this. So, so the first one is in, it's in section six, it's going to be on page 22, 6.6, the election of officers. There was the question about in the draft, it was talked about doing it in the May meeting. And so depending on the timing of election, typically, there's not enough time to do that. So based on advice that was, like given was to change that to conducted by annually at the first regular meeting of the board in the month following the certification of elections. So that's kind of how that language was changed in that, in that part of it. So in, in the instance that if we had an example where there was, the election was canceled and a new, a new people took place in May, or, you know, we had, you know, one vacation, only one person put in it, it was still going to be a new person, we could do... We could do it in May. We, in this case, if we have election, we have to go through the process, then it'll be the next month after that. Unless there was longer, a longer process, whatever that would be, whatever that first regular meeting. So that that was one change. There was, there was another very minor one that we caught related to some pronouns that were wrong. So we fixed fixed that. I forget where that was. And then. There was, there was some formatting, most of the rest of it, all about formatting, where I, we had some different. It's slightly different fonts, some different sections that were underlined, that weren't, that weren't underlined before. So I think I got through and corrected all of those. There was one other weird weird formatting section that was on page twenty six on eight eleven where it had checks. That used to be another, in another. Was like a section seven or something in the way we did it. Somehow it popped up below nine or something, but I put it backwards. It should should have. I think those were all the only other, the only other substantive changes from what was there before and what was suggested from the board based off of the last person.
Sue, if I might, before we think about approval of this, can I have a minute? I I hate to prove it and then have the issue I have come up where we have to reduce some things again. I had a call from more than one person expressing concern and I I got it certainly made me think more about it. Particularly after the election. Theoretically, in the thirty plus years I've been, that's never happened. David could probably answer better. And that's having all. All board from one specific geographical area. And I can certainly see that it happened in a couple of years at the next election. If I chose not to run or ran and somebody from their town, and don't get me wrong, I'm just, you know, I'm talking about equal representation. And at that point, this board would be totally controlled by people who live exclusively in Wilmington. And. As a, as a taxpayer, whoever in Waverly, I would be able to do that. I mean, I could come and talk about three minutes, but without having to represent a representation on board. No more than I think it would be good to have all five people from that area there too. So I think we really need to seriously look at some sort of. District gaining or wards or whatever the case may be. We haven't had to do it in the past because we've always had a fair mix. And I know the towns are working at it and, you know, love when there's several to do this. And and it's just a concern that. And I'm not saying that this could happen, but if you think about if we had a tremendous downturn. Like we did in oh eight, oh nine, then a board of all people comprised of Wilmington could easily say. You know, we're spending all this money over there and they don't have many calls. Let's concentrate on here. We're going to shut it. So. It it's a real concern as a board member, but even more of a concern as a taxpayer or homeowner in that area over there. And I have had other people express concerns to that also. So I don't know that we necessarily need to to lock in a certain number. But I really think that it needs to be addressed for the fairness of people in the outlying areas. I get the population is here. I totally understand that. But I also understand that people out there pay this as many taxes as people here and should have representation on this board as everyone else. So. That's why I think it's it's imperative that we come up and talk about it and have some sort of a solution. To make sure that everybody in our district is guaranteed representation on this board.
It's it's funny you say that because it used to be that way.
It was. We had one time, I think, had four and one.
Yeah.
We've never had total.
And they just worked, they took that out.
Well, we had problems getting people.
Right.
Yeah.
But the bylaws also address that if you couldn't find it the way applied.
It did. It did kick in to say it was an at large issue.
Yeah. So Steve, did Wilmington have a problem with there was more people from Waverly than here?
Well, it's never been all or none.
You had three last time.
Well, it's never been five and zero.
What we don't have yet.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I I just threw out a possible scenario that likely could happen in two years.
Yeah, for the next election, it's very.
It it could easily happen to you. If I chose not to run. And somebody ran it down, it would be five and zero. And I don't think that's, I just. I said, I'm I'm talking now as I'm taking my board hat off. That I should have equal as you in town or anybody else.
And as anybody knows on the board, you're covering three hours per month, not just one.
So I I get it. I I I've been around long enough where I know. I get it. So it it's just, and trust me, I've had other people express these same concerns. Trust me, so.
I can see that.
Anyway.
So I, you know, for my two cents, we we do need to be careful. Not. To create a a different issue, like you mentioned, we we used to, I think. When, when I first got on the board, one member was supposed to be from Buckeye and one from Waverly and. Maybe somebody from the east side of the interstate. And we went through a period of time where we were beating the bushes for candidates. Because nobody wanted to run. We we spent six months with a four person board because we couldn't find. Anybody to fill that empty position. So, you know, it it needs, there needs to be a caveat. If you don't have somebody.
Well, I I totally, I I agree with that. I I'm not saying it has to be cut and stone that they're asked to be have a person from this area or nobody at all. I would never know here. But I'm just saying that it certainly should give those people an equal opportunity where they may not have.
So. I think. Well, just my opinion and it it'll be up to the new board to have that discussion. But I I would think if we're going to do a little research and find out how other districts might handle it. Or that sort of thing. I'd say that could easily be added to the bylaws at a later date. Could approve the bylaws now and and work on that going forward.
But that's it's a sort of next for, I mean, we just take another three readings and all that, but.
Yeah, we've changed the way. Yeah. You presented as.
Well, I I just thought if we wanted to do it now, that's fine. I just, I just think it's it's very important to readdress it.
I think probably where where we will end up is with it though. Is kind of like the way you've done it in the past where if we have a vacant seat that it's being. Chosen by the board. Then you could pursue more of a variety of people from certain areas. But I think as far as it coming to an election. You're pretty much stuck with the fact that the open election has to be open to everybody in the district.
Not necessarily. I mean, there are a lot of municipalities that have districts and wards that you can only go for this person then at large.
Like commissioners have to move from a.
So that's, I mean, it could be done. It's 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 there. In fact, I mean, is this town, you know, in it, in some town?
It's it's in the SBA and you can do it. So. It's it's an option. So. Does somebody want to motion one way or the other?
Well, I had one other quick thing I was saying about, and I'm just being after the issues that we had. Where basically all administrative salaries must be approved by board. Increases. Because that's kind of what we had issues with. I guess that'd be in finances, but I I don't think that would ever happen again, but. That any salary increase would have to approve through this report. I might have been in others, all salaries. Well, all salaries, yeah, yeah. And that, it was all about administrative talent, but I don't think that'd be in finance, but that could be just a little sentence. This. I don't know where else we put it. It wasn't in bylaws.
Funny, I think it gets back to getting into, start to get into sort of, you know, operational, operational decisions and how how the operations pieces run. And it, I mean, I think there's opportunity, as you pointed out, for for language to kind of to fall in there to to do that. And then just to ensure that any of those prior salaries are first. First run through a budget, a budget analysis to ensure that they meet the budget, what's been budgeted for. And then that comes as a presentation to the board. I think it just goes, it's in the language, right? The appropriate place for that in language. And then, and then I guess the last piece would be. Not to, not to. Put a bad line on it, but a way that making sure that we're not not writing something into the bylaws piece that. That is just like general board oversight, putting, you know, putting.
It should fit in.
Yeah. That there, so that's something I think of from that piece. I'm happy to to look at some staff work piece on that part of it to look at. You know, we've got connections with other boards to that same piece, like how are the boards doing, districting board? Secondly, how are the boards doing? You know, salaries and wage benefits. I know it's, I know they're different when you're looking at places that have bargaining units or contracts versus not. And we know that there's other, so you have those, you have contracts and bargaining units and often that part has to go back through the governing, governing body to.
That's a, but could that not be handled with the contract between the board and chief specifically stating? Because all salaries would have to be approved by the chief. So if we had that specific language from every kind of, every contract from here on out, chief.
Yeah.
That any of all. Personal expenses. Would that not?
Yeah, as long as they're writing somewhere, that's all we need. Yeah. I think we go through some language piece that just to make sure that we're, again, we're we're not, we're not diving too deep. Be.
Yeah.
Too deep in the weeds to be trying to run the operations, but that piece of. Of meeting that, meeting that intent, right? The intent of the board to your chief and your leadership is that. All all salaries and all raises are transparent. They all meet the, meet what's been budgeted and what the, what's. What our budget can support and that those are presented in an open manner that those are, that this is what, this is what our intent is to do with these, that action.
There is some new state personnel law that clarifies some of that too. All positions and salaries have to be posted. So.
Sure. Man, yes, I just have a suggestion about the wards, the districts. You can do two seats for the country. On dwellers and two for the town limits and then one at large, which is the even split.
And some language to your point of if they don't get filled, then. Yeah.
And. We can't, I mean, yes, they is pretty clear about allowing special districts to do that.
Yeah, it's allowed. It's just how how you go about it.
And I think the language piece. Yeah, just.
Yeah, yeah.
Formal. From a language, from a language piece of, I'm sure we're not writing something that's exclusionary that we didn't intend to be.
Right, yeah.
So again, there's a couple, I guess there's a couple, a couple of options for for action, you know, just to point out to the board too, that this. That the current version we're working on is quite a bit outdated based off of many, many different board action pieces that hadn't been incorporated into that. So. This is our, this is really an attempt of getting that to to an updated and current version on that. As Chair pointed out, that we do, the way we are set on that is we can do, we do with one meeting. So we could present a draft to that piece and then that, the final reading for the board in this instance could. Could prove that piece of that. So. Just how we want to proceed forward with what we have for this.
So. Do I have a motion one way or the other?
I would say, I would say probably. From a form piece would be make a motion to approve and affirmative. And then if the motion doesn't carry them.
Okay, so I I will motion that we approve the bylaws as stands with the understanding that there may be amendments at a later date. But I would approve them so that we have a current set of bylaws. Wait a second.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries.
And I I'm just making sure that that was all four, right? unanimous. Okay. So I will finish this and then we'll. This one was, we didn't have any edits to this one, right? The edit was in the minutes. All right. So I'll get it done. I'll get a, the, I'll get copies for you guys to sign. And send that before we're done. And then we'll be able, because that does post on our website, so we'll be able to update that for that board and everything before we do that. So, okay.
Okay. Last that.
Okay, just quick, quick presentation of the board. We've had a claim from a. Prior employee that happened, you know, sometime ago in the past that our. Insurance and our insurance council has been handling. They've come to a agreeable resolution during the final stages of that and they'll, they'll need to be a. Just a signature and approval of the kind of the final paperwork piece that on the board's behalf for our insurance company. So just based off the timing piece of that and how that would go, I'd ask the board to authorize me to, on their behalf. That insurance company is down with all that makeup work ready that that I can sign that and get that down for the insurance.
And I, I will motion to. Authorize the chief to handle that transaction in the board's best interest. All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, do we have it?
If we could review that further in the future once.
Well, and we, that can, that can come to the board if you'd like to do that as opposed to, I mean, if it's the other way, but. It's, it's, it's the between the insurance company.
Just follow up with this.
Yeah, out of the later day. Yeah, absolutely. So.
Okay, so.
Calendar item. So based off the. Open house, a lot of requests for that part of it. On one in the, on the third, when we did the presentation out of the. Chamber of Commerce practice and then at the open house seventeen, there's asked by the open house. So looked at an opportunity to do the swearing in, whether it be in a, in a formal setting in a board meeting or a chance to do an open house. So. Looking at the fourth, Saturday the fourth to do a, a Saturday morning, just do a formal swearing in badge pending. I'm not sure if we have anybody else left to capture from our group. And then just close it with a, just a short open house here at station. So. Yeah, the the Saturday the fourth to do that. Then we have the June eighth pension board and regular board meeting here at station sixteen. So based off of, we'll get them there. I'll flip the, flip the. And then said in the regular meeting, I just bring in a couple, a couple of actions to go. That is all that is on the calendar between now and the next, next board meeting.
Anybody have anything else?
You just want a clarification to Steve's point. All six current board members are outside of the limits. Are all five, sorry, prior to this last election. No, I I just wanted for the record, right?
Yeah, but there certainly, I would think most of those identify more with Wilmington than maybe.
True, true. Just wanted to clarify.
Well, how about Wilmington proper? How's that?
I've got another.
Okay.
I just wanted to say just to you, thank you for all your years. Your devotion. I think you've done a hell of a job.
I appreciate that. Wasn't always pretty.
Basically lately, it's been rough, but.
Well, I I agree. I mean, I served with you and spent a lot of mornings at two o'clock in the morning, I served with you. And the last. My twenty plus years of board member, I've always appreciated. And the last, my 20-plus years as a board member, I've always appreciated the way you do your diligence and your commitment to the district and to the people in this community. We were very lucky to have someone like you and I still will miss having you here. Appreciate it, Chris.
Thank you. You won't miss me completely. Yeah, I'm gonna show up.
So you're just a stone's throw.
Yeah. You know where I live. Okay. Well, thank you for all that. And if there's no other business, oh, motion to adjourn at 4:53.
Second. Aye.
Motion carries.